I would like to call to order the six o'clock Council Budget Workshop of February 25th to order. We will continue with the same process that we used before, which I will allow Brian to go through each section and then we'll have it presented and we'll discuss. Thank you.
All right, so the first department that's on tonight's agenda is EMA. That can be found on pages 31 and 32, for those of you that have a hard copy. So I guess the first tab is salaries and benefits. Does anybody have any questions on the salaries and benefits? So the department, the one thing that's worth noting here is that 50% of the phone bill for EMA and the salary gets reimbursed through a grant. And it has historically, we get reimbursed for 50% of his wages and the payroll taxes, et cetera. And we have every reason to believe that will continue, at least for the next fiscal year. We don't know exactly how long. We'll continue to get that grant, but for the time being, it seems to be a sure, a safe bet. So any questions on EMA?
Yeah, Brian, real quick question on the revenue section. So the revenue budget is the same as the expense, but we expect it to be the actual to be about half of that?
Yeah, that's been an ongoing issue that we've never really addressed. We do have extra funds we can allocate from other grants, a med's grant, the EMPG grant. But we generally, unless we're in a tough financial position at year end, I'll just do half. If there's ever, if we're ever in a deficit, we are able to, we would be able to allocate 100% of it. But it's something, it's something in the past that no one, we really never really took the hit. And I think in years past, previous finance directors would allocate 100% when they could. And we definitely are in a position now that we could allocate the whole 16,800 in that next fiscal year if we needed to, but we, unless we need to, we don't, we just usually do 50%.
Okay, all right, I just, I found it, the budgeting of the entire amount a little confusing because it's under the item of state reimbursed and they're not going to ever reimburse us the whole amount, so.
Yeah, it is, we probably, in, yeah, in an ideal world, we probably would ratchet that down, but then we take a loss on it. So I think historically, we've just left it in there at 100%. I've, we've brought that up a few times in years past, that it really should just be 50%. But we never really wanted to take the hit and lower the revenue. So we've kept it at 100%, but like I said, we do have the ability to allocate 100% of that revenue from grant funds if we need to. So I think that's kind of the justification.
Okay.
Any other questions on EMA? Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you for what they're doing, for sure.
Yeah, he, I can.
Oh, no, I said I.
Yeah, I can vouch that he, he's putting in an absorbent amount of hours for the town for the amount he's, he's supposed to be working for us. I can, I could promise you that he's putting in a lot more. And in times like this, we're really fortunate to have him.
Hey, Brian.
Yep. Yes.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, hey, just wanted to reach out and say, Ron McDonald, it's phenomenal, the stuff he's putting out. He usually puts it out, then I put it out to the Hopkins Page. A lot of good positive feedback on what he's putting out. It seems people by getting the word to them, which is really very good. So kudos to Ron and his crew.
Yeah, as you guys, as everybody's aware, this, this whole vaccination rollout, vaccine rollout has been pretty hectic and chaotic and not the best direction from the state. And he's definitely done a good job weathering that storm and, and keeping us informed as best, as best as we can be with the information that's being provided.
I told everybody, I said, this COVID stuff changes daily if it does not change hourly and runs on top of that.
Aaron, did you have something to say? I think you were starting to say something.
No, I mean, I was just, I was hoping he had another job because $12,000 is not much, but apparently he does have another job. That's good. And he is doing excellent job.
Thanks, Sharon. I'm sure he's glad to hear that. Definitely helps when you're working long hours to feel like it's being acknowledged. So I think unless we have anything else for EMA, I think Ron, you're, you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of the positive feedback.
Well done, Ronnie.
Thank you.
All right, guys. Next department is education.
I don't know.
Actually, it would be Mr.
Yeah.
Yep, public welfare. It's under boards and commissions.
And that's Joe Moreau.
Old Depot Road.
Yep.
Age 32.
Yeah. Joe, you're, you're. Or on, you did you have the floor, Joe?
Good evening. It's Joe Moreau, Old Depot Road. My buddy Brian again, trying to overlook me. That's okay. I, I am still a Yankee fan, Brian. Just want to let you know. Good evening and thank you for your time tonight. As you're aware, this position was not filled for the 2018 election period. I want to thanks, thanks Sylvia, Scott and Frank for their support for this position. There has not been a lot of awareness about the programs available to our residents in need. And I want to thank Lisa and Chris for improving the contact information on our website for our residents and hopefully to make it easier. I've mentioned it before, I'm working with three clients at this point, but I know there are other residents out there that need our help. Also, I want to thank Bob Marvel. I was talking with Bob a while ago when we were talking. He mentioned the idea of possibility of sending out postcards to alert our residents to some of the information that's available. I know Lisa has a bulletin board with information, but there's not a lot of residents that, that get into our town hall for obvious reasons. I don't know what the cost would be, but I'd be willing to donate my $50 stipend towards the expense if we decide to do the mailer. I'm open to any ideas or suggestions to get the message out. And I wasn't sure, Brian, do you want me to go line by line on the budget for my, for this position?
I think you just did.
I'm afraid if I don't go line by line, I won't sleep very well tonight, but that's okay.
Councilman Hurst, I've long advocated funding for this position because it's a question not only the role of the Public Welfare Director, it's also a respect for town government. Because when you don't believe a town office should at least receive some type of stipend, it shows a lack of respect for town government, in my view, particularly that office in question. What I'd like to suggest, and I know things are tight, we're concerned about staying under the budget cap, but I would like to tentatively put in $100 as another line item under that. The Public Welfare's discretionary account. And if anything is really major and he thinks he needs more money, you can also ask the council for tipping, dipping into our discretionary fund. But I think that the Director of Public Welfare should be able to use that judgment. You can't do much with $100, but I would hope that the council would see fit to put $100 into the Welfare Director's discretionary fund, that anything that he thinks he needs to pick up, any supplies other than, I know the town clerk is helping with copying and that type of stuff, but anything he might think that he needs, he would have the discretionary to go up to $100. And I respectfully suggest that we put that amount in as a, as a line item for the Director of Public Welfare. Scott Hurst has spoken for what it's worth.
Okay, does the council want to vote on that? Or chime in with, if you guys agree or disagree?
Do we need to, is that something we would need to vote on, Brian?
I don't think it's like a vote, but I think we get a consensus on what everyone's feeling.
Just a consensus.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I support what Scott said.
I support.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay. All right, I'll add $100 then.
And just put it under discretionary fund or so anything that he needs to pick up in a year's time, obviously, there's a lot of resources and at some time, the council might want to do a mailing at least once a year. At the, at the end of fiscal year, what the town has done and resources for town government, because not everybody has technology. So it'd be a good idea, but for now, I think the Director of Public Welfare should have at least some money that 100 bucks doesn't go too far, but I think it's a good gesture. Thank you. And thanks for your support on my idea.
Welcome, Scott. I mean, along those lines too, you know, if we're talking about, you know, the Director of Public Welfare, I think, you know, with all the talk of the, or, you know, with the new website, I think, you know, having obviously a spot potentially for, for that section would probably be a pretty good start, I, I would say, considering, you know, I've kind of looked at some of the numbers of the day, I mean, and I could be wrong, but I, I want to say 25% of our town population is 65 and over, or something like that. And if, if that's the truth, I mean, that's, that's, that's pretty substantial.
And at least two of the five members of the town council are 55 and older. I'm one of those two, at least two. Who's the other one?
Bob? I guess that makes three of us then. Sharon's got.
I'm the oldest guy, so you know that.
Well, I'm 67, but.
I'm older than you.
Steve.
Yes, go ahead, Joe.
To, to your point about the awareness in the website, as I mentioned, I had a conversation today with, with Lisa and Chris, and they had some, some great ideas because right now, the, if you go on our departments and you click on Town Clerk and somewhere between Access to Public Records and the locator file is a couple of blurbs about the Director of Public Welfare. But I think what we're leaning towards is when you go to departments, there will be a separate line for the Director of Public Welfare so that you can click on there and get to the information. And Lisa and I reviewed that information that she's going to put on there. Also, Lisa had a great idea about connect, connecting that with the, I think it's Department of Agent or Senior Citizens line so that, you know, the more places we can put this information, hopefully the more residents that we can help out. I, I certainly appreciate the 100 bucks and I would be willing to, to match that myself. So I don't think that the money is going to be, you know, the biggest issue, but it certainly will help to to spread the, the word. And, and maybe it's a flyer that would incorporate other things besides the Director of Welfare. It could be the senior citizens. It could be, you know, other things that we could get the information out. And also some information on how they could contact us via telephone, you know, without access to a computer. So I think it's a great start and I appreciate any ideas or suggestions that you may have. And thank you for your support.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
All right. Thanks, Joe.
This is Lisa. Could I make a comment?
Sure. Yes, go ahead, Lisa.
After I spoke with Joe today, I spoke with Chris and he, he confirmed that it is already listed under the Senior Servants' webpage. So that was already added in there and I was happy that it was there.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right, next department is education, which is page 40. So this, unfortunately, we don't have too much discretion over this page, but if there's any questions, I certainly can try to answer them or relay them to the Finance Director at Charahoe and get them answered for you. Does anybody?
Because we don't really have a feel about the state agency will be, but how much of the, assuming what it's likely to be, the proposed Charahoe budget and the proposed Hopkins budget as it stands now, how much of our taxes besides wise will be general government and how many will be education?
So your question is of our tax rate, how much of it is attributed to?
With schools and how much is versus general government?
Um, well, on, on the fly without, you know, going back and doing some research, I could tell you that education, it, actually, I do have that. Education is 67% of our budget, municipals 24. And the tax rate, direct tax rate for education of our $18.66 proposed tax rate, $14.20 goes directly to education and $4.46 goes to the municipal budget.
Well, I think the thing that's very important, if you consider Charahoe and Tuesday night is a meeting, and I believe each town has to have with 25 registered voters to have a legal meeting of the Charahoe Financial Assembly, and I'll stay corrected if I'm wrong on the numbers. Just to have that meeting, and it's obviously going to be a virtual meeting Tuesday night, March 2nd, so you know, I would point out to them, any of the listeners that 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 meeting has, or still has a forum that all the towns have to meet. I don't know how they're going to handle it mechanically, but it's an important meeting. The actual voting is in April. And certainly, my issue has been for many years, it's the failure of the school district to have an outside management study. And now they're talking, and the school committee, by their own actions recently, have decided to support the one elementary school concept. And I'd like to see an outside management study. I think that especially deals with manpower and things of that nature, which has a profound impact not only on the taxpayers of this district, which I am one, but also the operation of town government and how we address the running of the town of Hopkins. And so it is a very relevant, important thing, but it consumes so much of our town taxes. Thank you.
I have a quick question, Brian. Um, the school system, does the school system, I mean, I'm sure just like the town, I mean, they, they go through a yearly audit and stuff like that?
Yes, but when you say, when we talk audits, there, it's not like, like what Scott's referring to where, like in the corporate world, like in a corporate world, if you get audited, they're, they're really trying to find errors and mistakes, you know, as opposed to gathering financial data and assembling financial statements. So in the, the school system and the municipalities, the audit is really, I mean, they do like check internal controls, but it's really more of just like closing the books and getting the financial statements together. You know, they, they wouldn't really point out any of the issues that, that may be in that budget. They wouldn't address, address the budget really too much.
Right, because that, I mean, that's, that's up to the voters to spend what they, you know, they vote on that and that's what gets passed. If it gets passive and it fails, it fails. So I, because I, I know there's a lot of questions about that and and I'm going to refer this question to Scott. Scott, so the, the outside management study that you're talking about, it's kind of generally a, a a study where they're talking about like efficiencies and stuff like that and, and that the money is being spent the best way that it can? Is that kind of what you're?
Yes, specifically an outside management study looks at the operation of the school district. It's not like an audit, because an audit determines whether the money was applied or spent in, in the way you designated. Outside management study would look at the labor costs, the staffing needs and the number of people employed, everything from equipment to facilities, everything. And it, obviously, you probably wouldn't do a complete one, but certainly a labor cost. And I find it very interesting that the Charahoe School District in the school committee, and I'll say this, and I hope I'm quoted in the press, that if they really seriously believe that the voters of Charleston, Richmond and Hopkins should vote for a single elementary school in Charahoe about doing an outside management study, they're crazy. Specifically because we, we, I like to know exactly if you're going to have one elementary school, the manpower needs that would, how are those numbers determined and things of that nature? You know, everybody talks about being well-informed and all this type of stuff. Well, let's be well-informed. Let's have an objective outside look at the operations of Charahoe. And I challenge the school committee. If they want the voters to seriously entertain their budgets, their proposal to have one elementary school, that they come up with the goods, they have an outside management study of impartial people with credentials to make a report and come up with something. Thank you.
Okay, in, in that line, I definitely encourage voters to get out. I mean, it's, I am, I don't want to say I'm shocked, but I, I think it's actually ridiculous, the lack of informed voters we have. And, you know, me personally, you know, I get a lot of, you know, oh, you guys don't share much, you don't share much. But, you know, I always say, as do other people, you know, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. I mean, town website is there. If people want knowledge, they can find the knowledge. It doesn't take much to dig into it and to find out and to be involved. You know, I, I see a lot of people commenting about the council. I see a lot of people, you know, commenting about the, you know, school and, and everything, but you know what? I watch every I'm, I mean, every school committee meeting and there might be three or four people from Hopkinton. And it's never the people that are always vocal about it, ever, ever, at all. And it's kind of disturbing. It's, it's kind of bothersome. I think there's some misinformation out there. So those are just some comments I wanted to make. Thank you.
Steve, can I speak?
Sure can.
I think, I think, I think the, the realization of what's going on at the school is sinking in. I mean, look at us, we got a brief, we got a brief on a Monday night about, hey, we're going to do this and boom, Tuesday, they voted on it. There was no time to even look. And it's just like anything, you see these pictures of horrible conditions and all of a sudden, there's this shiny object over here, but it's got a price tag on it. To me, just like anything in my world, you take a good look, you do a walk around the truck and take a good look and say, hey, is this worth, worth working on? Is this worth doing? But that night, there was just way too many moving parts to even think about it. And the, the school committee just jumped, jumped that following Tuesday and voted, yeah, hey, we're going to go do this. So I think people are starting to wake up because there was some chatter. You know, there's some chatter about Safin towards the end, but I kind of agree with Scott a little bit. It'd be nice to have some kind of have some kind of manpower, look audit, look at it and go from there.
You know, and, and.
And I agree, and I agree a hundred percent with you. Voters are, there's voters. If you look over the last couple of years, 25 people come out from Hopkinton, 35 from Richmond, 200 from Charlestown. Now this last one, because like I've told you, I'm always the first one in line that day to vote. And this last one, everybody kind of woke up a little bit. You saw some more, you saw a ton of people come up, but of course, I think you got voted in last time. But yeah, you're right. You can't lead a horse to water. You put it out and put it out, you know, it's just, and it's up. It's the same thing. But I compare what you're saying. I understand what Scott's saying too.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's not easy. It's, I mean, it's complicated, but you know what? The school committee did what they were, I mean, they were elected, they're, they're elected officials just like us. They're, they have the right to do what they do. You kind of put all their eggs in one basket. I mean, if anything, I mean, it's gonna, I mean, it might bite them in the, in the nose, you know what I mean? But they're going to have to sell it and, and again, like the school budget, you know, when it comes time to vote for this newer fewer subject, it's, it's a completely different ballgame. It's not my aggregate vote. So depending on how the towns come out, you know, Charlestown can't carry Hopkins and Richmond can't carry Hopkins. And so it's going to have to, have to be. So, you know, I'm just hoping that people watch the school committee meetings. I mean, even if you don't watch the meeting, look at an agenda. I mean, it's there. I mean, it can be found. It can be found if you look. Awesome. You know, I'm sure if somebody called Lisa at the town hall, she may point in the right direction to, to where they can find that. You can go to Charle's website. There's plenty of places to find agendas. That's why we have agendas for meetings. So people can be informed and know whether or not that is a meeting, that there's something that may affect them or they have interest in. So, you know, I do have, have sympathy for, for some people, but I do not have sympathy for people who, who want to just voice opinions without any facts or, or who do, who do not participate as we are right now.
But I think it's very important to realize.
Our civic duty.
Councilman Hurst, the fact of the matter is that Charahoe, give or take a percentage point control is around 75% of our taxes. It's a bottom line budget. So the school committee, even after their budget is adopted, they have the power to move those line items all around. So they do have that advantage, even after their budget is approved. And and they need to be accountable. And they have to realize that these students come from families of different financial means and their ability to pay taxes varies depending upon their household income, as well as the town they live in. So they have to be sensitive to those needs. And there's also a maintenance of effort law that you cannot reduce a school budget less than the previous year unless there's a non-recurring expense or decrease in student enrollment and maybe some other factors. So they have, you know, built-in advantage. They consume most of the town taxes. They have the maintenance of effort rule in their favor. And so they do very well. And that's all I want to point out this time. Thank you.
Excellent.
I would, go ahead, Ryan. I mean, obviously, you know, as a finance director, my, my two cents would be, you know, I'm not for or oppose this newer fewer. At this point, I don't have an opinion. That's not my job. But from a finance director, I would just be curious, you know, the one question that I think we should ask is how much is this going to cost the towns? You know, give us a dollar amount. You can't put it in our next fiscal year budget without telling us the financial impact. So we're sitting here trying to budget for the next fiscal year, but we don't really have a clue what to put in there at this point. Like, is it? And, and to not let the taxpayers know prior to voting on this, it's like everybody wants a new school. I want a new house. I want a new car. But, you know, the reality is, it's like, at what cost? Tell me how much it's going to cost me and then you can make, oh, you know, a logical decision on it. But to not really be able to, I mean, I don't think they have a clue because they don't know how much the land's going to cost at this point. So just, just give us a. So just, just give us a dollar amount and say, all right, if it's gonna cost your taxpayers, it's gonna, it's gonna increase your tax rate. You know, it's, it's gonna be another three hundred thousand dollars to the towns and it's gonna raise your tax rate, uh you know, seventy cents or whatever it may be. And, and it's like, okay, now we can go tell our taxpayers, if you want this, it's your decision, but this is how much it's gonna cost. And without being able to do that, I don't, I don't even know how you can pose this, 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 this big of a decision. Um but that's just my two cents.
Hey Brian, it's Mike. I mean, I'm sure, I think all five of us counselors and probably even Lisa and yourself feel the same way. It's very sensitive, I mean, we all know you really can't forecast until you know what the numbers is, but how often have you seen something built on time, built on schedule? You know, on price and this, and like you said, nobody, nobody could, nobody could come up with a, an idea of how much the land is gonna cost. And it was just, there's just too many unknowns. There's too many trap doors, you know? That's, you know, where I see with it, so. Go ahead, Sharon, I'll set.
I'm sorry, Steve. I just wanted to, to go on record to say uh also that I agree with uh Scott. I think there should be a management review. Um and I also think on, on this, on this uh uh new school si- situation, when they, when they came, they said that to close, option two would be to close Hop, Hope Valley and ex- and expand the other three. And that was gonna cost twenty million after the Rhode Island gave us money. Not talking about the land though. Um and the, the cost of just going, keeping the four schools like they are and doing general maintenance, it was gonna cost twenty-one million. So in a way, closing one school and expanding the other three is somewhat cheaper than by one million, cheaper than um, than, than continuing the way we are. But they did not pick that. And so I agree with the rest of the counselors that if they're gonna go with a whole new big school, we really need to have all of the figures before we can vote for something like that. And with, and Brian, I, I'm making an assumption that that whole thing is not in FY twenty-one, twenty-two's budget. Because from what I understood, they're not gonna even have, you know, a lot of these answers until until way into next year. Um so you can't vote for something that you don't know what the numbers are gonna be. Am I right or wrong?
Yes, that is correct. I, I actually spoke with the finance director of Cherahoe today um via email and I had some questions for him about the time, timeline. Um and he said that they had a meeting tonight with the school construction committee, um and they were gonna establish a timetable. But he was able to tell me that um they're asking for a ride extension till February twenty-twenty-two, um which would um give a deadline for December of twenty-twenty-two for construction to be lined up and for, to start. So they would, apparently they're shooting to start for December, which would be halfway through the fiscal year we're budgeting now, FY twenty-two. So again, it's, it is something that would start, you know, in the next fiscal year according to their current. But you, you know, again, like Mike said, who knows, the construction starts going and nothing ever happens on time.
But I don't, so what kind of money are they suggesting that you have to budget?
Nothing, I haven't heard anything yet. Uh there, there's nothing, they haven't given us any figures. Like, you know, that's the thing, if they came with a proposed, a proposed A, Budget A and a proposed Budget B and said, okay, this is the way it is today, and if this happens, then this is what it's gonna result in, and this is your new, this is gonna be the budget, then we, you know, we'd be able to at least forecast our own budget. But at this point, it's, yeah, there's just too many unknowns and I don't know how we would possibly project any sort of change from what they're telling us the current uh fiscal year budget is for the school.
But, but the other thing is, they needed to, they need to have an architect um and an engineering firm to to start the uh, you know, drawings and all of that. And um so they do have to have some upfront money. But I thought that this whole thing would have to be voted on individually by the town.
By the voter, yeah, voters. Lisa, I think Sharon's right, isn't she? You'd have to go for a, all three town vote, no?
Yeah.
At some point, yes, but I think they'd have to submit special legislation because when you're speaking about uh they have to change the Cherahoe Act as well, because right now residents are promised matriculation in their own elementary schools. They promise that their own children can stay in their own local elementary schools.
So can we, can we ask our town solicitor to at least investigate whether for sure the Cher, the Cherahoe Act needs to be changed and the process. And all of that needs to happen before, I would hope, before we get too far down the line, but um, uh, uh, cause then that sounds like we need to have a vote on the Cherahoe Act, or is that through the General Assembly?
So this is Bob.
It would be, there's, yeah, there's a couple of different ways and, and it's gonna, uh, we still don't know an awful lot yet. Go ahead, Bob. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, that's okay. Just a question, ma- maybe I missed something, uh but I was under the impression that the vote that they took on that um, you know, uh, the whole building, building thing was to go forward with a feasibility study and to get more information on cost. Um, you know, suggestions where they would put the building and so forth, because I think you know, as, as we've said before, there's, there's just too many variables that they, they don't know the answers right now. Uh and so I think the vote was to, to have them go and, and go and find those answers. Uh and then compare that to, to what, you know, what the other options were. Because I think there's also a lot of intangibles that they have to consider, like the Cherahoe Act.
Well, uh, Councilman Hurst, uh, of course I grew up here at Cherahoe, thousand seventy-one. The politics of Cherahoe is that the town of Charleston is very concerned about opening the Cherahoe Act because the subject of an equalized tax rate might be brought up. And that's, that's the problem because changing the Cherahoe Act or opening it up might lead to uh other things being discussed. But I think that is foolish specifically because the way the Cherahoe Act is written, in order to make a change in the Cherahoe Act, every town has to approve it. But there has been times uh in the history of Cherahoe uh that the Cherahoe Act wasn't followed like they went to the legislature to change the meeting time of uh the annual meeting without, you know, a referendum approval of all towns. So that's one way, but that's a cost of minor change. But it'd be interesting where it proceeds. My concern is that uh I just think, I'm gonna refrain from commenting further so I can collect my thoughts on the subject. But growing up here and seeing so many things through the years, but the real problem with Cherahoe is the financial differences of the three towns, specifically the town of Charleston with the other two towns, Richmond and Hopkinton. And if you look at the assessable bases and the tax rate and things of that nature, pretty easy to understand why that's a, a case. Thank you.
All right, I will, with that said, I mean, let's kind of, let's um, let's, let's move on and get back on.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, we got a full we're gonna, we could talk about this.
Please this one to death.
Um, all right, so next uh department would be the Poli- HPD, the Hopkinton Police Department.
Hold on, hold on, let me give the mic to uh Chief Palmer.
So pages twenty-four through twenty-six. All right, so page twenty-four would be the salary and benefits. Any, any questions on salaries and benefits? Okay, um, all right, so page one of the police budget, compensation and salaries. Any questions on compensation and salaries? I, I'd like to point out that um we did make a decision when the chief and I met. Um it was his suggestion to move some money out of the education reimbursement, um which is, you know, we're, we're required by union contract to cover education. Um but he was more interested in using that money in training, so we did make a shift from education reimbursement and increased the training line item, which I thought was a good decision. Um so a- any questions on compensation and salaries?
Did you say, Brian, that we were in a, a contract negotiation here?
Correct.
Yes or no? That's fine. All right, cool.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
How is our, our compensation for officers comparable to other towns of our size, you know?
It's, I mean, we go through this, well, through contract negotiations, you know, we sit down and we, I do all sorts of analysis and charts from, on benefits, wages, longevity, stipends. I include all that data from the surrounding towns and analyze, and that's what we use to negotiate the contracts. Um, I, I mean, I guess it depends who you ask, you know, um I, I think they're, they're compensated um very comparable to surrounding towns. Um they're certainly not getting paid less than surrounding towns, um but, you know, i- it, it, it comes down to is generally they'll wanna compare themselves to Charlestown and Westerly. And we'll, we'll say, well, we wanna compare you to Richmond and say like Gloucester. So it really depends on who you're comparing them to. Obviously Charlestown and Westerly have half the tax rate, double the tax base. Um and they just have more money, so they can obviously pay their employees higher, not just the police, but everyone across the board. So, you know, they're, they usually come to the table and, and wanna be paid like Charlestown and we say, well, we think we should be in line with, with similar towns um such as Richmond and Gloucester, but I, I think that they're i- it's, it's very reasonable. They, they're not underpaid, but I don't think it's, it's a situation where they're, they're overpaid. They're getting um a lot more than, than some more towns our size.
Well, a- also I think it's important to remember, remember that Wesley and Charleston are coastal community. And I guess place activity tends to increase in the summertime, particularly, particularly in the beach areas.
Yep. All right, um, any other questions on compensation and salaries? Okay, uh services?
Yes, I'd like to know what the increase, what training, um Chief Palmer, you're going to do. I just uh joined the steering committee of Healthy Body, Healthy Mind and they said that you are um involved in training um y- you, your, your police to handle um behavioral problems calls. And I didn't know if that's what you're using that training for.
Uh some of it, yes. Um it starts off with the fact that we have mandatory training and we now have, and this refers to your que- question, uh mandatory eight hours of mental health uh that, that encompass, encompasses the training. We have fire rooms, obviously, uh um caesare, breathalyzer, these are all uh domestic vials. These are all mandatory by uh statute. And that mandatory mental health came la- uh two years ago. Uh unfortunately, it didn't come with any, uh they mandated it, but they didn't come with any uh extra money. Uh the other things that we'd like to include in this is uh diversity training, crisis intervention, uh sensitive, sensitivity training, uh fair and impartial training. Um and increase our use of force uh training, so that's, that's some of it and uh and obviously we try and make the best of every dollar that we get. Uh it's not all overtime. We try and use our PMAM, which is a uh is a software where officers can learn uh while they're working, so it doesn't incur any overtime.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right, uh building and operations. Any questions on building and operations? Um motor fuels. Vehicle. Yep, go ahead, Mike.
What's it, what's the, what's the magic number on a cruise a hundred thousand miles and it's out?
Can't hear you.
Hey Brian, what's the, what's the magic number on a cruise a hundred thousand miles and it's out, or how does that work? Do we, do we bond for that or we just go out and buy it or is it a lease?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, um Mike, if, if you don't mind, we could talk, we, we have uh actually a new cruiser in the CIP. Um so I can explain that in, in much more detail as far as the, the borrowing and, and the process. Um just after we get through this operating budget, if that's okay with you.
Yep, sorry, I didn't mean to jump the gun.
No, no, it's all right. I, I mean, it's, it is addressed here as well, but I have uh probably some more illustrations that will help you guys in the CIP that to help explain that. All right, so motor fuels. Okay, vehicle and equipment maintenance. Supplies and uniform maintenance. Okay, and uh revenue.
Uh, uh Chief Palmer, I'd like to know, um what's the, I know that you have some policemen that are, that are used for, for um to, to babysit traffic problems, um you know, when somebody is, I don't know.
Traffic detail, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, traffic detail. It's different than a regular policeman, right?
Correct.
And you, do you have, do you have a certain percentage of your policemen that are one or the other?
Uh counselor, what, what occurs there is we have a detail uh software that uh that our regular police officers can bid on. Um secondary, we have traffic officers that they're not police officers, but they use our vehicles to monitor the traffic and uh, uh it goes in seniority and so every police officer is eligible to put in for the, that detail on the highway. And then if it, if nobody, no police officer takes it, then was termed a traffic officer, then can take that. Um and with the benefit of that is to the town is that that for every hour that our police cruiser is being used, that we get approximately twenty-five dollars uh from the vendor. And then we also get approximately five fifty for admin fees. So roughly, we're up around thirty dollars per hour from a vendor, so it doesn't cost the taxpayers any money. And so that's the benefit of it and also the benefit is obviously, we want people to be safe out there.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, all right, with that being said, if you guys have your CIP budgets available, we can go talk about the cruiser um and, and kinda answer Mike's question there. Um just give me a half a second. I'm gonna open up because the number about uh the frontline cruisers, Chief, do you remember off the top of your head, is a hundred or a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Well, right now in the contract is, uh we went from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five, probably about maybe four or five years ago. Uh I'd like to propose, because we're coming up on a contract this year, is to see if we can get up to one, around one forty. Obviously, we want police officers to be safe out there, but the vehicles are, are much better today than they were even ten years ago. So it's something like I would like to explore at the, at the table.
Thanks for that. Yeah, I couldn't quite remember. I was, I was like, it's either a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five, but now that you say that, I do remember um that being increased, I think, the last time, time around.
I'd like to thank uh the chief for uh I'd like to thank the chief for, for going there. I think that certainly he wouldn't want to injure any of his offices. But it seems that that's a good logical thing. And I thank the chief for pushing for that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so on the CIP, it is going to be page seven. And it's police vehicle replacement. So as you can see, this year we're proposing to fund it $53,274. The last payment of our two sedans, we procured an FY20 for $23,000. Then the second payment of last year's SUV that we funded. And then the year one of the FY22. So the three of those payments would add up to 53,274. So that's what we would need to fund in the current year. So Mike, to answer your question, generally, we, we lease these. I mean, we, we like to pay upfront when we can. For a lot of our CIPs, it's, it's kind of something we've always strived to do, to, to keep debt down. And, but for the vehicles, we know if we do lease something, we try to make the, the loan or lease shorter than the life expectancy of the vehicle. So we, so if we do a three-year lease, especially with rates as low as they are currently, I think that's the best option as opposed to put in, this, this particular vehicle is around $44,560. That's, that's the quote we got or an estimate we came up with for, for the new SUV. So instead of putting that money upfront, you know, with the current interest rates that, that are being offered, it's, it just makes more sense to, to lease it over a three-year period. And we know that we'll probably get five years out of it roughly. But at least three before we get to the 125,000 miles. And then we'll also, you know, then there's also the use of detailing after it hits the 125. So we still will, will receiving a benefit as a town by using it as detail after that. So I hope that answers the question.
Oh, yeah, that, that's, I was kind of free with that. And of course, you know, my thing is, is I'm going to say, is grants out there, GSA, Homeland Security, there's a ton of this, there's a surplus of stuff out there. Like I said, when we want to get together, we'll look at some of the sites. You know, not saying there's brand new truck here, come take it. But they do a lateral transfer from state, federal to towns.
And, and we have taken advantage of that. I mean, I'm more than happy to, you know, I'm always looking for opportunities to save the town money. So I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and, and look into different options. We have, the, the chief and the police department has, they have taken advantage of forfeiture vehicles. So we've, we've gotten a few vehicles in the past through forfeiture money. And then there's also FDA funds if we receive any forfeiture money through there. I think the chief has, has mentioned that that would be one of his number one or top priorities, would be to procure another vehicle with that FDA money when it comes through. So, so we do try to purchase vehicles with forfeiture money when it comes through. That's pretty unpredictable at times. We don't really know when it's going to come. And I believe, Chief, didn't we buy a vehicle last year with, or was it the year before with grant funds?
We've bought several vehicles over the years with our seizure money. They're all mostly admin vehicles. I don't think we've ever had to purchase a admin vehicle with town money. We've also, we get burn grant money every year. Usually it's somewhere around, was diminished over the years, but it's approximately $7,000. We saved it up one year for three years and then purchased the vehicle with, with all the three-year burn grant. And obviously we always pinch in pennies. We, last, last year, we ended up selling some of our detailed vehicles. And we're able to purchase computers for the, the next vehicle. So you always pinch in pennies in any way we possibly can. But seizure money, in my opinion, is, is probably the best way of going if we, but you got to get it. So.
Wesley had that, when they had the fully loaded Explorer a couple, what, five, six, seven, eight years ago? They used to go around, it used to, I don't know if you guys remember, you used to say, this truck, this vehicle is seized or something. I, I, I think we're on the right track, yeah, Brian. And I think Chief, you know, you know, just, just some thoughts, not trying to get in anybody's lane, but you're the money guy, just throws my tears at you.
No, I appreciate it. I'm, I'm, I'm always open to, to new ideas and different perspective. So, yeah, anytime you want to sit down and look over grant options, I'm, I'd be more than happy.
All right, I'll, I'll have a sidebar with the, I'll humiliate you.
Same here, I don't mind being part of that.
No, 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 Chief, like, just, sounds like playing, we get together.
Chief Palmer?
Yes.
Are these vehicles, do they have special things on them for become, for being a police vehicle? I mean, obviously besides the lights, but in the silence. But, you know, are there, are there any, you know, bulletproof things on them or?
Well, Counselor, they do have a lot of special things. There's high-performance vehicles, number one, that the average person can't get. The brakes are, are, are different. The suspension, the chassis is a little bit different, a little stronger and such. So, yes, it's, it costs a little bit more based on that, the alternate, because, alternator, because the vehicle is constantly running and sitting. So it needs that special alternator. So there, yes, your question is definitively, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Chief, is the town manager's car bulletproof? We might want to look into that, depending on how this budget goes.
Brian, bring up the shop, give me about a day. Run flats on it and everything.
All right, all right. So moving on to dispatch, pages 27, 28? Any questions on salary and benefits? All right, and then compensation and salary? Okay, any questions on supplies, uniform and maintenance? Yeah, the, the, the dispatch and, you know, it primarily is all contractual stuff anyways. So it's, there's really not, we don't really have too much discretion in there. Even the uniform replacement, that's all contractually driven. So if you guys are okay with that, we can move on to the next page, which is animal control.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks, Chief, appreciate it, good night.
Thanks, Chief.
Hello.
How are you? I would just say that, for your information, I've asked the discussion about dog issues, the animal control president Monday night, you know about that?
I did, yes, no, that's awesome.
Okay, and I know Mike is interested in that issue, but has there been some comment on Facebook and that's why I moved on?
No, I understand, I've been, I've been watching it in the.
I don't want to steal any Council Gary's thunder, but it's an issue that we're both interested in.
No, I, I've been watching it in the shadows. I haven't made any comments, but I've been, I've been watching everything that's going on, on those posts.
I can't hear Scott clearly.
Neither can I.
I have a hard time, no, I just told the animal control officer about the agenda right of Monday night, dealing with animal control. And it's been discussed on Facebook as well as I didn't want to steal Council Gary's thunder on the issue. And I thank the council president for putting it on the agenda. So thank you, Council President Moffett.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, animal control salary and benefits? All right, compensation and salaries? Okay, supplies, maintenance and operation? So it's worth mentioning for, just so everyone knows, that we did have the animal control office or the animal controls shelter was actually closed for about a year. So that's why some of the, the amount spent in previous years is a little bit misleading. It was, we didn't have a animal control officer for a short stint. So we, we had to close the shelter. And we, we really heavily relied on Westerly. And then we were fortunate enough to find Samantha and, and get her on board and open things back up. So just so you know that, if you look at historic spending, that, that's the story behind that. But any questions? Okay, revenue, oh, go ahead.
Got to be a thankless tax, being an animal control officer. And people complain about dogs mainly, or it could be any type of animal, but it seems to be cats and dogs are the number one animal usually. And this could be horses or something of that nature in a rural town like Hopkinham. But must be very difficult because dogs move. And if you have a problem, they could be somewhere else. So it's got to be a very tough job to do.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions on revenue?
You have, you know, clinics for spaying and neutering animals?
Um, we don't, in, in our, like, associated with us, what I do, like, when you have an adoption, we have them set up to go to like Salmon River, where the cost is part of the adoption fee. They prepay us to get the animals spayed and neutered. And it's $80 through Salmon River to have that service done for cats. There's not one low cost for dogs unless you go to like the Westerly clinic. And I help set the appointments up with our adopting parties. But a lot of the time, our animals are already fixed before they go out the door. And it, it becomes like a reoccurring, if they adopt like a kitten, we can't get those fixed yet, they're not of age. So those are our prepays. And then our dogs, like I said, the dogs and the adult cats will get fixed before, before they go out the door. It's one of our like guidelines to being able to adopt them out. But we don't have a spay and neuter clinic that goes on. But we do have a rabies clinic, which where I've been working with, it's Rema, they, they run the rabies clinics. They shut it down last year due to COVID. This year we're looking at possibly fall, being able to do a low-cost rabies clinic for the town.
You, what interaction do you have with any of the kennels in town?
We, I do, like the kennel checks, most of the time I'll go out there and do kennel checks when they put in their licenses. And then any kind of formal complaints. I don't really deal too much with them unless we have an issue to go out with them. If we get a formal complaint, then I'll go out and check what's going on. Typically, I haven't had to deal with them coming in too, too much.
No, it's a, I think it's a thankless job and probably job that is tough to please everybody because people complaining about howling dogs or whatever, you know? And there's supposed to be a leash water in this town, as far as I know, you're not supposed to allow a dog to roam in Hopkinham.
Correct.
Lisa, is there any way we, maybe we can get a copy of that, the last?
I, I can barely hear you, I'm sorry.
Lisa, is there any way we get a copy of that, that ordinance, the latest one? I think it was.
It's already in your packets.
Yeah, I, I asked, I asked the town clerk for that copy of the ordinance. And I think it's in our regular zoning regulations. But I look forward to a very productive conversation Monday night on that topic.
Thank you. No. No. Myself, a clipboard? It's a, it's more so even, the trust has sent out a, an email saying that no animal controls have signed any kind of projectile. They've taken it from all of them. Westerly has one, but they're separately insured. They have a separate insurance policy. So most animal controls officers in Rhode Island don't have any kind of projectile protection on them.
Anything that's of concern, he calls us, we go.
Correct, I do have them in my back pocket if I need them to come out with something. They, they will, they will come out on calls with me.
Yeah, it was just, it was just, it was just a general question. I was like, what if she goes out and this, this certain dog, and I don't want to get into it, so we'll talk about it Monday. What happens if, you know, dog gets her on the ground or is involved in something like that? How does she, how does she interact? I always thought you had a sidearm.
No, I have a catch pole if needed. And that we do, like, in our trainings that we have, they, they do give us some pointers on what to do. If, say, I'm on like a regular routine dog bark, barking complaint, and the dog comes at me and like the guys, the police officers aren't with me on that kind of a, that kind of a complaint. That's a routine. If something like that happened, we, we were shown ways to protect ourselves with what we have, like if we're getting out of the truck with our clipboard or our catch poles are always supposed to be on us as we're getting in and out of the truck.
All right, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take off on the side, Brian, go ahead.
It's okay, that's all right. I, I just want to try to keep on track a little bit here, just because we have Mary Sawyer waiting to. If there's any more questions for Samantha? If not, we can.
I think she does an excellent job for us. They, you know, like I said, I don't want to get into, we'll talk about Monday night. But she's very, she's very proactive. She reached out the first concern right away. I talked to her, I talked to you yesterday.
Yesterday, yep.
Yep, five minutes later she called me back, sure she was wrapped up. But, you know, that's the thing, and like Scott's saying, you can't please everybody. It's just like anything else, you know, just, they don't, you can't be by the phone 24/7. But, you know, excellent job, you know, what she does for us. And I'd like to thank you, thank you for it.
Thank you.
It's Council Man, thank you very much.
Thanks, girl.
Thank you.
All right, next up is recreation. And so just a quick, quick note to the councilmen that are at Hurst and Geary. There's, there should be two mics there if you guys don't want to share, Chris?
Yeah, there is, I had, I passed one over to you.
Oh, gotcha, okay, so there should be. He said there's four total, if you guys need to. But I, I think that's probably it for people that are going to be in person anyways. Okay, so next up, recreation. Let's see. Let's see, recreation is pages 36 through 39?
Am I, am I up?
You are up.
On the screen, I just, okay.
So, okay, any questions on the salaries and benefits page?
Yeah, Brian, I got one.
Yep.
Unless I'm reading this wrong, full-time wages? Hold on. I need new glasses. Am I reading this right? Part-time wages outweigh full-time wages?
Yes.
Brian?
Want me to answer that, Brian?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can, go ahead, Mary. I mean, there's, there's several, that's a, a combination of several people, two of which are 16, one, one 16 hours a week and another one that works year round. And Mary, why don't, why don't you go into a little more detail if you, if you will?
That's asking, Mike?
Yeah.
So the full-time wages is the clerk. And the part-time wages is everybody else that works for the rec department, including one woman, one position who is 25 hours a week. And. one woman, one position who is 25 hours a week and her position is program and events coordinator. So she basically runs the after-school program Monday through Friday, 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. We're open till 6:00 PM, sometimes 7:00 PM. That's her primary oversight job is oversight of that. And then the other union, so this, these are two union employees I'm referring to right now. The other union employees, she's anywhere from four to eight hours per week. She was one of the first employees along with myself that were entered into the union so many years ago. She was the only other person beside myself that was working here, working here. She is youth camps coordinator. We had to assign titles to these jobs a while ago, but she is the oversight supervisor of our summer day camp, which runs anywhere from nine to 12 weeks full-time each summer. And then she, during the academic year, she's a teacher. That's her main profession. During the academic year, she works evenings and some weekend special events type thing. So then everybody else in that line item are all of our seasonal employees and well, actually we should say year-round employees are college kids and our high school kids that work after school, that work the summer camp, some work some basketball, things like that. Athletic, I have we have some money carved out for athletic coordinator who helps a lot with our large, our larger leagues that run basically seven days a week when we're running. So those are all, I mean, I, I can give you a good idea if you ever needed to see the breakout of how we figured all this out, but over the years, um, this is what we've, you know, come up with, with all the people that are working for us.
Thanks, Mary. Does that answer your question, Mike?
Yes, it does. Thanks, Mary.
Sure.
All right. Next page, compensation and salaries. All right. Services. Supply, maintenance and operation. Fuels. And revenue.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wondered if we're, if we're gonna get the, the revenue that we were hoping for, do you think that with COVID, is, is it going to be less really?
Yeah, I've, so I've addressed that. That was something that we really spent a lot of time on. Obviously, that's a huge concern. We've lost quite a bit of revenue this year, so it was very much on the radar. And my pattern is basically I've calculated the amount of revenue that were taken in and which is 130,000. And Mary and I had discussed, you know, if these programs didn't, you know, theoretically, if we were to get zero revenue and none of the programs were to happen, we would be able to scale back on expenses. And we'll, we'll, we'll see with the individual programs, for example, that, you know, if we don't have the playgrounds and we lose the revenue from playgrounds, we would be able to not spend the expenses on that side. So we were able to scale back the expenses. I came up with an estimate of like 114,000 roughly that we would be able to scale back, assuming we had zero revenue and there was no programs whatsoever. Now, the reality is we're probably going to see some somewhere in the middle, you know, where we're not going to see maybe 100%. Maybe we're hoping we will. But we'll see, you know, whether it's 50% or 75% or whatever it may be, we'll have to monitor the expense side throughout the fiscal year. So that if the revenue isn't there and the programs aren't at 100%, we'll have to scale back the expense side to offset the lost revenue. That, so that's the mindset that we came up with and, and it's definitely going to take, you know, we're going to have to keep a close eye on it, Mary and I. You know, probably more so Mary, just keep a close eye on those programs as they go. And, and as we see the revenue come in and how, what the attendance is like for these specific programs, that, that will give her, you know, kind of a benchmark is what she should be spending, you know, and a big part of that would be the part-time wages. You know, that 69,000, if, if these programs aren't happening, you know, a good portion of that money wouldn't need to be spent along with the program expenses.
Okay.
The costs, there would always be adjustments and succeeding budgets because of the COVID situation regarding recreation particularly. Because there's certain things that normally would be spent, but because of COVID, the budget or the expenditure, expenditure side is just not there. So that's happened, will happen a couple of years, probably last year and certainly this year to some extent.
All right. Any questions on the, I'll just go through the programs because they're, they're just basically one line of expense, one line of revenue. Any questions on the playground programs? Winter basketball?
Yeah, Brian, if we have these, if we have all these, you know, with COVID, with all these winter basketball, anticipating registration. If we're not doing basketball, does this money get saved? Does it stay in the fund or is it just moved to the next, next cycle?
Well, if you look at it, we would end up, we'd still take a small loss. Like I said, aggregate for all the programs, we'd probably lose 130,000 in revenue, but we'd be able to cut about 114 in expenses. So we'd still see a little bit of a loss. And if you look at winter basketball program, for example, we anticipate at full capacity, we'd get 20,000 in revenue and we'd have about 14,200 in expenses. So we'd still, there wouldn't be surplus. It would be the opposite. We would take a small hit on the, on the budget if, if things were at a, at a complete loss. But we're hoping that, you know, by winter of next year, hopefully participation numbers will be up.
Excellent. Thanks, Brian.
All right. So T-ball and instructional, we, we actually moved that into the general recreation expenses and revenue because the program was getting smaller and smaller every year. So we just decided to, to merge that in with the recreation revenue and expenses. So camps and special events, any questions? Okay. All right. So any other questions before we let Mary go?
Mary, thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead, Sharon.
Okay, I just, just the last line where it says a negative 166,459. So that means that recreation is not totally covered by its revenue.
Correct. Yep. So that, that number comes from the 297,000 of expenses and 100, less 131,000 in revenue.
That's fine. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Thanks, Mary.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is town manager's budget, which is where all the big money's hidden. Page, page 41, 42. All right. Salary and benefits. Okay, compensation and salaries. Any questions there? So the, the biggest moving factor would just be the health insurance because the previous town manager was a buyback, so he didn't get health coverage and his assistant was as well. So there was a good amount of savings there when we don't pay for someone's health insurance, but you know, we can't make that assumption going forward. It, it, you know, if we do, it'd be, you know, if we do find someone that is a buyback, that's great, but it's more, more times than not, people take the coverage. So that's why I had to change that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Lisa, do you know where we are on the search?
We are nowhere.
We have not, we have not started to search.
Okay.
You're still, you're here. You're here, Brian, with us.
That's fine. I mean, I think the, my understanding was the, you know, the ordinance and, you know, getting the, the council up to speed on everything was kind of a priority. So now that that's, you know, coming to an end, I'm sure this, this will be the next thing on, on your list of things to do. But, uh, you know, I'm hanging in there for the time being. And I, I understand you guys kind of have a lot of things on your plate as is. So if I can help by holding off a little bit longer, I, I have no problem doing that.
Okay.
All right. And this is Bob. I assume the, the salary on the, and this budget is based on what is comparable in other towns?
It, it's not, it's based on his, the previous town manager's salary. So it's based on what he was previously getting paid. And, and then I added 1% increase like I did for all the other town employees.
Got it. Okay.
So that, that's something I think when you guys, because, because it's not a union position, but I think you probably take the same approach we do when we negotiate the union contracts as we get, there's reports available from the Rhode Island Department of Revenue that basically have a list of all the municipalities and what each position, you know, my position and what they make. So that, that'll, that's a helpful tool that, that's been used in the past. But yeah, just to answer your question, it's based off the previous town manager's salary.
Okay, thanks.
I will add though, though, that I, I hope when we do advertise the job that, that Brian is, is interested in it. So I, I, I think he's done a wonderful job. I mean, being dual, dual-headed, especially during a very difficult time. So I just wanted to make that or, or just, just put that comment on the record.
I second that.
I, I would agree with that too.
I would agree with that also. Thank you, Brian, for what you do. I mean, it's kind of like all of a sudden like boom, you know, you get two things drawn in your plate and you run with it. Well.
I appreciate that, guys. Yeah. Had it, had COVID not been around, I, you know, I think things would have been a lot smoother. COVID definitely made things challenging, but you know, I, I hope I'm doing, doing an adequate job. I, I definitely lean, I, I thank you. I definitely must say, I appreciate those comments, but I do lean on Lisa and, you know, the chief and Dave Caswell and, you know, I, the department heads have really helped substantially. And I appreciate their assistance because without them I'd, I'd be in trouble. So thanks, Lisa.
Appreciate your, your efforts and we want, we're a team and we will get through this no matter what. And I thank you for everything and I think you've done a very good job too. So you can call me anytime and I'll help you in any way I can and you know that, I hope.
Thanks, Lisa. I do call her like 20 times a day.
Yeah, you gotta knock that off.
One and down, call Lisa. Yeah.
Y'all lean on Lisa a little bit too much.
Yeah.
It's all right. Okay.
All right. Supply, maintenance and operations.
No.
Okay. So next up would be the finance department. Let me see what page that is. 14 and 15. Salary and benefits page. Any questions there? All right. Compensation and salaries. All right. Services. So just, just the, the one thing I would mention there is the contract services, just so you guys are, are in the know, we upgraded our payroll system a couple of years ago because we had a very old system that, or I guess process, I should say, where we were actually, the department heads were collecting Excel spreadsheets from their employees and then submitting the emailing the Excel spreadsheets to pay, to the finance clerk. And he was manually inputting them into the paycheck system. So we, we implemented a new system a couple of years back and that's why there's an increase there in the contract services. So now that it's all incorporated within paychecks, like, like I think it should be in, you know, any, any business or, you know, in this day and age, that system just seems so obsolete and a lot of human error involved. So we now have a online system where all the employees log in, enter their time, it automatically updates in the department head's management view and then they can review it. And once it's approved, it goes off to finance and it's automatically, it's already input into the paycheck system. So it saved a lot of mistakes and errors and it wasn't well-accepted at first. It took a little bit of growing pains, but I think we're finally at a place now where people are comfortable with it and it's definitely saving a lot of time and, and headaches. So. All right. Any questions in services? Okay. Supply, maintenance and operation. All right. The next page is debt services. So I, I went through in this first page, I, I added some comments just to kind of give a little bit more of a background on this various loans that we have outstanding. And just a little side note, I'm actually currently working on refinancing two of our older bonds. Because rates are so low, I reached out to our bond counsel, excuse me, and asked them to start looking into some of our older bonds and seeing if they were callable and if we could actually refinance them at the lower rates and hopefully save the town a decent amount of money. And as of now, we're waiting to hear back on one of the bonds. One of the bonds is not callable, but we're trying to talk to Webster who holds the bond and see if they're willing to work, work something out. So without giving too much information out because nothing's, you know, written in stone at this point, I'm, I'm trying to work an angle with Webster to see if we can maybe consolidate two older bonds into a lower rate and save us some money. So any questions? All right. So the next page, debt services is, you know, it, it is what it is. The, if there's any questions on any of the specific bonds, I'd be more than happy to discuss it with you, but as far as the budgeted amounts, it's just basically what's in our amortization tables. So it's all kind of predetermined based on our, our bond issuance. So, you know, I just basically plugged these numbers in off of the bond documents, but if you guys have any But if you guys have any questions on any of the bonds.
Yeah, Brian, I do.
Sure.
Just a quick question for the benefit of us all. When we do bonds, is it, what's the time of frame to give them to pay it back?
Okay.
Is it, and is it insured in case something goes south?
Is it, I'm sorry, what was the second part of that? Is it insured?
Yeah, is the bond, the bond's insured and say if something happens, we can't pay it back or something like that, are they insured?
Oh, that's an interesting question. Not to my knowledge. No, I don't know of any insurance policy for bonds like a missed payment or anything like that. I, I could certainly look into it, but we don't have anything currently that covers if the municipality, we would default on the bond. And that, that would substantially hurt our credit rating and, and it would, that would be bad. But I don't know of anything. I'll certainly look into if there's an insurance policy, but you know, I'd like to, we have a really good bond rating currently. It actually was increased by Moody's recently. So I was happy about that because that just, you know, it's one of those things that's kind of a spiral. You know, if you, if you have good finances, you get better rates and it helps. And if you have bad finances, you're paying more in interest and things kind of go in the opposite direction. So we're, we're trending in the right direction and we've, we've tried to keep our debt services consistent year in and year out. So when we, one bond expires, that's when we'll maybe entertain going out and issuing a new one if, if there's a need in the voters field, there's a need. But as of now, we just added the land trust bond. It was issued in 2019. So that was a big chunk. That's like a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year to pay off that two million dollar bond plus the million dollars that we're still paying off on the 2012 bond. So total debt service for the land trust right now is like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So tho- those are the two, you know, that's a big, big portion of it. The road reconstruction bond, that's another big one that we took out in 2015. And we refinanced police station at that point in time and consolidated it with the, the new road reconstruction bond. But to go back to your question, like the time horizon or the timeframe on these bonds. What we really try to do is like I was saying with the police cars, we try to structure it based on the, the useful life of the asset. So something like the land trust, we would, we would do like a twenty-year, twenty-five-year because, you know, the land's not going anywhere. Something like the streetlights, we would do like a ten, fifteen-year. You know, road reconstruction, I think we did a fifteen-year. So, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to take out a bond on something that's useful life is fifteen years and still be paying it off.
Twenty-five years later.
Yeah, right. So like, like roads, you know, if we had to repair the roads every fifteen years and we're still paying, you know, we had a twenty-five-year bond, we'd still be paying it off and we'd have to go out and get a new one. So we, we really structure it based on the useful life of, of the asset that we're borrowing for.
Excellent. Thank you. Boy, streetlights, ooh, that was painful.
The streetlights?
Oh boy, I stepped through many of those. Oh my God.
Yeah, that was a tough one. We, I mean, in the hindsight, though, you know, we're, we're definitely.
It does look, it does look excellent. I'll give it that. Yeah, it does.
Yeah, yeah. People were really happy with the change in the streetlights, but from a finance perspective and in the taxpayer perspective, it, it definitely saved us a bunch of money in the long term. So. But yeah, people weren't really too excited about it at first.
Horrible meetings. Horrible.
Brian, this is Bob. Just a couple of questions, just out of my, my curiosity more than anything else. What is our current bond rating for the town?
Oh, let me, let me send, I can send you a report. It's, it's a triple A rating. So it sounds, you're probably pretty familiar with this because most people, that wouldn't mean much. I have a, let me see here. I got it right here.
I could actually. We need to ask you that.
Yeah, let me, what I can do is I can send out the move, the last Moody's report.
Okay.
Because that's like a little more than just the, the short answer of it's a triple A rating.
Yeah. Okay.
So yeah, so we're, we're a triple A rating and this will give you, this kind of breaks down the credit overview, the issuer profile. It's a, it's a whole report that they put out annually on all the municipalities. So I, I can send that to you tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you. And, and also I, because I'm curious on all of these bonds for different projects. And I don't want you to, you know, do any work to put this together. I'm just curious if there is any documentation already on what these projects were, what they entailed. I'd be interested in, I think we probably all would be interested in knowing like, you know, what was the extent of the streetlight, you know, streetlights or, or, you know, what, what actually is the Palmer Circle project? What did we, what did we take out a bond for?
Sure. So I think I tried to, well, yeah, I, I guess there's not as much information as I had hoped. On the, on the page before, I tried to give a little bit of a description, but it, it's not really. It just basically talks about the rate and when it was issued. But, you know, I could, I could certainly tell you the streetlights, you know, if, if you want a more in-depth analysis, I could, we could chat on the phone or by email, but I could quickly tell you that we, we, we purchased the streetlight alone, we purchased the town's streetlights in 2017 from National Grid and we converted them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we converted them to LED dimmable with like timers. So it saved us like seventy-five thousand dollars a year in electrical bills and utility expenses. And it cost us two hundred and twenty-one thousand to do. We got a bunch of grants to, to do it. So the road reconstruction bond, that was just to repair roads. They, they did the chip seal on a whole list of roads. And that was, that was done in 2015. The Palmer Circle project was done at the same time. It was a similar project that was also done specifically on Palmer Circle to widen the road because there was a commercial building and there was anticipated there was going to be additional traffic on the road. So we, we repaved that road and we added, or we widened it. That's my recollection. The police station loan was for the police station, which we refinanced because we, we I don't remember the year off the top of my head. Is it here?
Two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, we refinanced it 2015, but it was, it was initially, I think it was like ten years into the bond already. Maybe not even quite that long, but the rates had just dropped since it was initially bonded. So we refinanced that when we did the road reconstruction and we consolidated it in with the bond. And generally the, the bigger the bond, the better the rate it gets.
Sure.
So we, we refinanced that in 2015 and the land trust, you know, that, that is what it, you know, what it sounds, it's a land trust bond. Two land trust bonds that were issued to purchase open space in Hopkins.
That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. All right. Any other questions on debt services? All right. I think that's a wrap for tonight. Like I said, prior to the meeting starting, we were going to discuss building and zoning revenue a little more in depth. As we discussed the last meeting and I think that we should have put that off till the next workshop. I think, you know, if we wait another week or two, we'll probably have a little bit more information to, to make a decision on what we want to do with the revenue. So that would be my recommendation is just to table that until the next workshop.
I think that's appropriate.
Brian?
Yes.
I just, I know, I guess at the first meeting, you said some things, I think, about page four. But I'm hoping that at the last workshop, you know, that you, we can go over pages.
Of course. Of course. Yeah, that, that's really kind of the, the biggest, you know, that's the biggest piece. And that's really where like the tire hits the road, for lack of a better term, like that, that's where, so I thought for these first workshops, we kind of walked through the individual departments and the, the next workshop, we actually have the nonprofits. And so if we had another workshop, which we tentative, we, we didn't schedule one, but we discussed having a, a final one. I think it might be a good idea to have one final workshop where we can kind of put all the pieces together and I can walk you guys through the tax rate and we can just kind of look at it as a whole from a high level for the total changes as a whole to expenses and revenue, which you guys will be familiar with because we went through all the departments. And then we'll discuss the tax rate and fund balance and CIP, all that stuff and how, how it all kind of comes together and formulates that tax rate.
Okay.
That would be my plan because that, you know, at that point in time, you know, we'll, we'll have a really good idea of what the majority of the budget looks like. And then we'll just kind of, you guys can kind of just see the, the high level stuff and really make any sort of decisions you want to make at that point in time.
Excellent. Thank you, Brian. Before we close out this meeting, there's, there's just one hand up. I'm going to ask Joe. Joe? Floor is yours.
Hi, this is Joe Moreau. I don't recall if we covered page six yet. Brian, but I know Brian and I had a discussion a couple of years ago about cell phone towers and the revenue. And we had talked about some cities and towns are using flagpoles. And inside these flagpoles, they have the cell, cell equipment for additional revenue. And I noticed under the year-to-date, December thirty-first, it shows a dollar amount of ninety-three thousand four twenty-four, which is much higher than any of the previous years. And I know, Brian, you had mentioned, I thought that some of the contracts were coming up due. So I wondered if that's why we show such an increase in, in that number. And the other thing I want to say before I hang up, I was hoping to hear that we would not need to do a search for the town manager. Brian has done a great job and obviously he has to do what's best for himself and his family, but I was hoping to hear that he would be our town manager. So maybe we can change his mind somehow. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Steve, you want me to address the tower rental?
Yeah, go for it. I mean, I think we've all, in one of your reports, read it, but I would, I would, I would like to hear it.
Yeah. So just real quick, that was something I had discovered last year that one of the contracts, we had an escalating clause in our AT&T contract that was never honored by AT&T. So I approached them and, and you can see like the ninety-three thousand dollars. We actually were owed, it was like a one percent increase over the last, like fifteen years. So like aggregate. So I approached them, they reviewed the contract, they said, yeah, you're right. We, it was supposed to be escalating one percent a year. So they issued us a check for, I forget the exact number now, but it was, it was, I want to say around like thirty or forty thousand dollars. And now our annual payment has been increased to where it should have been had it escalated over the last ten, twelve years. So it was, it was a nice little find, but it's not, we're not going to see that revenue necessarily again, but we'll get the increase in rental fees from them going forward.
In that, and Brian, that, that increase looks like it's about a seven and a half thousand dollar increase.
Yeah, you're right. Correct.
Yep. With that being said, I think you're, you're, you're all set, Brian, for tonight. Yes, Sharon?
Yes, I'm happy.
Okay, I, I thought you wanted to say something.
Steve, I got something.
Sure, go ahead.
As, as you know, I, I, we already covered, I think we talked about this before, but a lot of grumbling about National Grid dropping, dropping big trees and leaving stuff in people's, in people's yards or on property. And I'm sure it's a, it's the crosswell, it's the homeowner's property or is it the town's property? I know I had talked casually about it with Dave, Dave Caswell this afternoon. But there's a lot of grumbling going on because they're dropping trees left and right. And I'm not talking, you know, too small, you know, two or three inch stuff. I mean, it's some big stuff. If you go by my street, which they're working on now, there's some trees down there that are about the size of this table that we sit at. So it's right, it's off the road. It's not a thing. It's, it's, you know, it's a little bit of an eyesore. But with the weather we have, you know, snow, ice, something like that, I just don't want to see somebody get hurt. I don't know if maybe Brian, maybe you and Dave can come up with something. Cause I thought, because of my understanding was if they, if they cut it and sound tom, it's on a property, National Grid is, it's on the hook to have the vent they're using pick it up, get rid of it. I understand time constraints, they're not going to come pick it up tomorrow, but it shouldn't be set there for three, four, five, six months. If you take a ride down Collins Road, it looks like, you know, Billy Jack and the hillbillies got a hold of a couple of chainsaws and just went nuts down the street. You know what I'm saying? It's off to the side of the road, but we need to, you know, it, you know, we see so much of it and I can understand why people have started to say, it's kind of an eyesore. So just something to look at. Maybe you can talk, Brian, maybe you can talk with Dave, you know, maybe, 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 you know, see what National Grid's up to.
I actually did speak with him today about this. And he, he's making a call. He was, when he left my office, he was going to go make a call to National Grid. And he had a contact there. He was going to reach out to. And if he doesn't get any sort of response from them, then I'll reach out as well and, and make sure that they do something about it.
Yeah, like I said, there's some grumbling. There was a grumbling a couple of weeks ago, but the grumbling is getting a little louder. That's all. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian.
Sure. We'll look into it.
All right. So with that being said, I'm going to adjourn our, our budget meeting and we'll see each other next Monday.
Lisa, should I turn the lights off?
Yeah, please.
You're gonna be even madder when I call you. You're gonna be even madder tomorrow when I call you and tell you the bad news.
What's the bad news?
I can't tell you. I gotta go home and look at my driver real quick. Then I'll call you.
Okay. Good night.
Good night, guys. Thank you. Have a good night.